We will begin with disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Does any council member wish to disclose at this time a pecuniary interest in any of tonight's agenda items? And if so, please state the general nature thereof. Seeing none, we'll move forward with approval of minutes from September the 12th, 2016. It can be the whole meeting. Mayor Jaworski and councillor B second, all favor. Moving forward, there's no presentations, no consent. We have some informal and formal public meetings to get through today, and we have some delegations for several of them. So, at the start, I'm going to read a caution to delegations, and this stands for all delegates that are here tonight. Waterloo City Council welcomes and encourages members of the public to comment on matters of interest to them. However, delegations are cautioned that derogatory or inappropriate remarks may constitute slander and could potentially lead to legal action against them. If such comments are made, the delegation will not be permitted to continue speaking, and the comments will not be recorded in the minutes of the meeting. Applause, booing, or other audible demonstrations of support or opposition are discouraged because they may be intimidating for those with opposing views. Please display the same courtesy and respect to others that you expect for yourself. Delegations and members of the audience are requested to respect all citizens regardless of differing opinions and views. So, with that said, we're going to move into our first formal meeting, formal public meeting, and that is zoning by law amendment Z 1613 to remove an age-holding provision from 311-312. Batavia Place? Batavia Place? It's not in Uptown. Okay, so, the report was prepared by Rita, and you don't have a presentation for us, but we've all read your report diligently, and we do have a delegation to start, and that is Ms. Weir? No, we don't. Yes, we do.
So, are we going to read out the notes requirements first?
Oh, yeah, you should do that. That's part of your job.
Thank you. Yeah. Notices advertised in the Waterloo Chronicle on September 15, 2016, and mailed on September 14, 2016, to all property owners within 120 meters of the subject property and to public agencies. No informal public meeting was held.
Excellent. So, let's begin, then, is Ms. Weir in the house? There she is. Come on up. You've got five minutes to tell us all about it.
My name is Ann Weir. I live on Batavia Place, have lived there for 50 years. So, obviously, there's something attractive about the neighborhood. About a year ago, the students from the planning department from University of Waterloo came, and as a project, they were to do something about Batavia Place. And they drew up a plan for these two properties, and it was a lovely plan. It was a little park with little fountains and everything like that. And that was too good to be true, of course. But so now, what we're going to have is a six-story building there with no trees, no lawn, no nothing, just a brutal building. And do we need one more of these buildings in the city of Waterloo in Northdale? I would like to ask someone a question. Does anyone know how many surface rooms there are? Can anybody know that?
Well, you have four more minutes to talk, so if you actually ask a couple of questions, we can ask staff after you're finished, so.
Okay.
And you have, yes.
Four more minutes? Okay, well, that's pretty well. All I have to say, I am just appalled by what has happened in Northdale, and not the first one to say that. And I would really love if you could rescind this terrible plan that you've got. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. — Does anyone have a question in the delegation? All right, thank you. We'll ask the staff that question. Does anyone have questions for staff? I believe Ms. Weir's question was how many surface?
Surplus.
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 Surplus rooms there are.
Through you, councillor Durrell. I'm not aware exactly how many surplus rooms there are. That's not part of the each removal application evaluation.
Okay, so I'm just looking in, surface rooms in all of Northdale is what your question would have been, or just in this building?
There must be surplus rooms. Look at all the buildings that are around. And the demography of the students has declined somewhat.
Thank you. So, more oral question. I got it. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Weir. Councillor Whaley.
Well, to try to answer your question, this very question's on the minds of many people in the community. My guess is citywide, you might have as many as 2,000 vacant bedrooms, which is remarkable. But, you know, the question, I mean, think about that. Why would more and more buildings be built and come forward, and how many holes are in the ground, and how many cranes swing in the sky? It's a really interesting conundrum that the community faces. That doesn't have anything to do with this application. This application has to do with someone that's brought forth a proposal to make a business case for yet another six-plex, and, you know, and that would be the — is it the city's business to question that business plan in light of the surplus? Is it really our business to do that? That's something that we may struggle with in the future, but with respect to this particular application, what we are asked to do is far removed from questioning surplus.
Thanks, councillor Whaley. Does anybody else have comments? Then we go. Are we going to close a formal public meeting? Correct. I have to close the formal public meeting before. Are there any more delegates in that room that would like to speak to this? Then we will close this informal meeting and move on to the formal meeting. Anybody have any questions or comments? Would anyone like to move the motion? Yes.
Madam Chair, you have to conclude the formal public hearing before we take comments.
Okay. Can you help me with that for a minute here? Thank you. This formal public meeting continues to consider zoning by law amendment Z 1613 to remove holding provision from 311-312, Batavia Place. You've already read that part. So now we're moving to, pardon me. Is there anyone else present tonight who wishes to speak to this application? I think we've declared that that's not. So, are there any questions from council to the delegation that's happened? So, there is no more delegations. This formal public meeting is concluded, and the application is now open to council for a motion and debate. Yes, councillor Henry.
I'll move ahead with the comments.
Councillor Freeman seconds.
So, this is another side, the private sector has, is moving forward with items inside the Northdale Plan. At my suggestion, the applicant and our staff organized a neighborhood meeting just to help introduce neighbors to this particular project as it was coming through and answer questions that they may had. It was very well attended from folks in the street, and I'm glad that we took that extra time to introduce the neighbors to this project. I know that councillor Whaley has identified the speed at which the private sector has determined to move forward with the 20-year vision of the Northdale Plan is not something within our control and continues to be surprising, I think, to me, how quickly they're deciding to move forward. But that's the planning for it. In 20 years, will we be in a place where a diversity of options for housing in our community, particularly near transit, is a useful thing? Absolutely. And this is another step on that journey. Am I surprised that development is proceeding in some of the cul-de-sac areas ahead of some of the other areas in Northdale?
Yeah.
I think that is a surprising location. But again, this is the private sector moving forward as it determines which plots of land it wants to deal with. One of the benefits that is coming on this particular site is a walkway connection, the first half of that from Batavia Place down towards Sunview. And when development happens on the other half of that connection, we'll be able to make yet another one of those walkway connections to make the neighborhood more permeable and more pedestrian and cyclist-friendly to move people around. And just on Ms. Weir's other point around the students visiting, they did a fantastic work in a course that they were doing last term, which was to help them think about how to design parkland spaces that young adults would use. That's invaluable work for when we get around to designing parkland spaces inside Northdale, which is part of the Northdale Plan. So some of those ideas, I know I was very intrigued by. I think we had more than a half dozen staff out to see some of those, so we've got some good notes from those meetings for what young adults would like to see in that area in terms of open space. So we'll get there. Not soon enough in my book, but we will get there all the same. So this is another routine approval the private sector has come forward.
Councillor Freeman? And my understanding is that it's already zoned for this. And so, because the zoning's already in place, the landowner has the right to develop this parcel. We're just lifting the holding provision that we put in place until the Northdale Plan is done, right? Yeah, so, okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, hello? All favor? All right, moving on to our staff report, special servicing agreement, 311 Batavia Staff are here to ask any questions, or we can move forward with the recommendations. Councillor Henry moving the motion. Councillor Freeman is seconding it. All those in favor? The motion, okay. Onto updates to, and we have a presentation on this. There's a delegation after that. So, updates to Ontario land use plans, city Waterloo review and comment. Rick Martins is going to tell us all about it. He's our policy planner, City Waterloo. Go ahead, Mr. Martins.
Good evening, council. The province of Ontario has several land use plans, key land use plans for different areas of the province. Four of the main ones are the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, the greenfield plan, the Nayar Scarborough Plant, and the Oak Bridges Marine Conservation Plan. Over the last eight months or so, they have been undertaking a coordinated review to look at all these plans at the same time. They're all due for updates and for amendments. So as staff, we've been looking at these plans, looking at the changes, and reporting back on what is changing going forward, and providing comments as well. City Waterloo, the one that's most applicable to the city, is the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe. We are within the planning area for that particular plan. The other plans are outside, they're geographic based, we are outside that. The greenbelt plan does touch a small portion of the region of Waterloo, but does not affect the city of Waterloo specifically at this time. So our comments have been centered on the growth plan in particular. We've been reviewing them and offered a variety of comments for council's consideration. And depending on how, if they're accepted, then we will provide these comments to the province at the end of the month, early October. So just a quick summary of some of the key changes, there are several changes throughout the plan. And just as a reminder, the growth plan directs growth within the municipality. It has growth targets, greenfield targets, for example, intensification targets that the city is required to meet, and also identifies how growth will occur throughout the planned timeframe. So some of the key updates that we are commenting on in particular are greenfield densities, for example. They are rising significantly from 50 residents and jobs per hectare to 80 residents and jobs per hectare. In addition to being quite a significant job, staff have some concerns about the implementation of this level of change. In particular, Waterloo has very limited greenfield land left. So the implications are quite significant for City Waterloo, for example. All the greenfields are located in the periphery of the city, for example, so this has some significant potential outcomes of how growth will occur in the future. Much higher densities, which in and of itself are not necessarily a bad thing, but it's how they're implemented and what it needs to be included. A bit of a technical exercise, but staff have some concerns about how they're implemented going forward. Similar to that, the intensification rate is increasing from 40% to 60%. City Waterloo has been doing a lot of intensification, and we've been meeting our targets in the last 10 years. So the, in addition to the actual rate of change, the amount of changing, staff have some concerns as well about the implementation going forward for the intensification rate. It's measured on an annual basis, which doesn't account for fluctuations in the market. As I said, we've done very well over the last few years, but in the future, the rate of growth and intensification may slow. We wouldn't want to be penalized, even though we've been doing very well meeting targets going forward. So we're recommending that they're counted on while you're rolling out, or should take into account those fluctuations in the market. Another key concern for the city in particular is conversion of employment lands. Again, this is a very detailed exercise, and basically, employment areas in Ontario, the growth plan, are protected, so it's very restrictive of what permitted uses are allowed in these areas. And then if the municipality wants to make some small tweaks or changes to these employment areas, it has to undergo a study called a comprehensive review. The problem with the proposed changes is that the province is removing this tool for lower-tier municipalities such as Waterloo, and only allowing them to be undertaken by upper-tier municipalities of the region. There are quite a few concerns with this approach. We would rely on the region to have an intake review for us, should we find planning need to make amendments to our employment lands. Also taking away a tool called, other tools are related to employment lands. For stationarys, this is the planning for areas around higher-order transit, such as LRT that's coming to the region. The city is currently in the process of undertaking stationary plans for the area. The province is introducing minimum density targets, which we are in line with. The problem, and some of the concerns that the staff have are how they're being implemented. We don't feel there's the proper level of flexibility built into the policies as we have now to make amendments or alterations and considerations for our particular situation. So staff's comments there are to, we agree with some of the density targets, but we would like a bit more flexibility in how they're implemented to take into account local considerations. And finally, we have a few other changes, but in particular, how these policies are being implemented is a bit of a concern for staff. Things like the greenfield densities, for example, we are now just starting to implement the policies, triple down from the regional plan that was under appeal. Some of our policies in the official plan are still either deferred or under appeal, so we haven't really had a chance to really implement the previous 2006 version of the growth plan, and now we're being forced to implement a bit more stringent policy. So it's a bit of a concern about how that's implemented. Staff prefer to see a phased-in approach taken going forward, same considerations for intensification. Those are being phased in, consistent with when the region does a new plan, but again, being mindful of how these policies are being brought in would be beneficial. Other considerations for implementation, just the tools that are going in that are being removed from our version. These are some of the highlights for our concerns. In general, we are supportive of the growth plan and the general principles, but staff would like to see a bit more flexibility and a bit more consideration for local conditions being part of the plan going forward. If the council agrees with some of the staff recommendations, we will forward those to the province by the end of the month to have our comments part of the record that they consider going forward. We're expecting late in this year or early in 2017 before they come back with a final plan based on comments that they were receiving from the province. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Does anybody have questions? Mayor Jaworski.
Thanks, Rick. Regarding the 80-plus residents and jobs per hectare in greenfield, the way I read it, or the way I understood it, is that this applies to even undevelopable land in a green space area. So if there's wetlands or things like that, or undevelopable areas, that still has to count towards your greenfield factor.
So, as it stands right now, if we look at an undeveloped area, the only part that we need, that we can net out, that we don't need to count towards that density, is prevention of significant natural areas. With the proposed plan, they are introducing a few more takeouts or areas that don't need to count, hydro corridors and a bit more environmental areas, for example. But we feel that it doesn't go far enough, so that things like parks are still need to be counted, even though they're not developable. Areas with really steep slopes, for example. On paper, you look at the ability to be counted as developable, even though in practice they're not. So that's some of our concerns with how the density is calculated.
Councillor Freeman? I just had a comment. Do you want me to wait till after the delegation's? Please. All right, thank you, Mr. Martins. Mr. Kevin Thomason, would you like to come up? I believe you have five minutes to speak.
Good evening. Honorable mayor, members of council, and guests. My name is Kevin Thomason, and I am the owner of 1115 Cedar Grove Road, Waterloo, Ontario. For many years now, the Grand River Environmental Network, along with numerous other community and environmental groups, have been working to ensure our remaining green spaces, farmland, source water areas, and source water areas are protected, while simultaneously ensuring the renewal of our urban areas through smart growth principles, such as better planning, walkable communities, and improved transit. The city of Waterloo, along with the region of Waterloo, has pioneered and led the way with innovations such as the environmentally sensitive landscapes, the protected countryside, the countryside line concept, heightened density planning, and new rapid transit. It has now been more than 10 years since the Provincial Places to Grow Act and the creation of the Beever Creek Bill. The Coordinated Land Use Review has been reviewing these acts, and this staff report is an excellent response to the updates and amendments the province is proposing to both the growth plan and the greenbelt plan. The future quality of life for all citizens in Waterloo depend on getting these things right, ensuring that we have successful vibrant cities surrounded by thriving natural green spaces, providing the food, water, clean air, and resilience that we all depend on. Thank you for the considerable effort that staff has put into this report. The issues and questions raised are quite valid, and the province needs to address them accordingly. The report provides similar feedback to Queen's Park, as the similar recent City of Kitchener report, and the regional report being presented at tomorrow's Planning Awards Meeting. Kudos for working together to coordinate feedback to the province, as it sends a strong message when they are hearing similar issues from multiple jurisdictions. It also reflects well on the region having good consistency and not seven conflicting viewpoints being presented in the province. We look forward to working with the city of Waterloo and the region of Waterloo to address these issues, develop the optimal smart growth plans, and continue to work towards the eventual expansion of the provincial greenbelt to Waterloo region, to reinforce our official plans, and to provide a vital second layer of protection to our beautiful natural areas, farmlands, and essential water up for recharge areas along the Waterloo Marine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone have questions? The delegations?
Please move forward. Keep moving forward.
Thank you, yeah, great, great. I appreciate you coming in. So, do you want to make a comment? And move the motion?
Yes, I have to move the motion.
And anybody from this side?
Oh, we speak move motion.
Okay, all right, well, I've got councillor Henry seconded again, so.
So I wanted to thank staff for preparing this report, and I think that it does outline the concerns, what I have a question about, and I guess a concern about, is whether, kind of what's our fallback position? Because if the province goes ahead and approves this the way that it's written, I'm pretty concerned about our transit areas and our ability to be nimble to get residential to be brought in alongside a lot of our employment uses, which is going to be really important. If I look in my ward, and where I found, where our ward bounders, together with Angela's ward, the transit station, both at Conster-Gamal and the one at Northfield, is bounded primarily by employment land. And what is going to make those hubs particularly vibrant is if we can bring in residential to that area. And the ability to meet some of these density targets will, in some regard, rely on the ability to be nimble to make that happen. And I'm really worried about that, and I am thankful to know that the comments that are in this report are echoed in the region's report. So the region recognizes too the challenges that they would be faced with if they have to do all the comprehensive review on all employment land in the entire region, because that would really inhibit our growth. So I guess what I'm asking, I don't expect an answer tonight, but I guess it's kind of staff setting their mind to this, I'm going to call it a fallback position, for lack of a better way to say it. And I'm also really concerned about what happens if the province comes back and says, we have to meet the 80 persons and jobs per hectare going back to 2006, because I don't, I mean, the cost of that, for the city to go back and re-plan lands, the fever creek was mentioned in here, but also carriage crossing, would suggest to me that those things that aren't built out would, in some regard, go back to the drawing board. And so I'm really worried about that, too. So, you know, and I don't know whether part of the recommendations needs to be to include the Association of Municipalities of Ontario in the circulation, but definitely, this is a significant piece that in some respects feels as though it's written for some of the municipalities that are closer to the GTA than us. And the last thing we want to do is inhibit development in areas where we know we've invested in higher-order transit to support the development.
Thank you, councillor Freeman. Mr. Nevin or Mr. Martins, did you want to make any comments back? Yep.
Through you, Madam Chair. I think you've hit two really good points. Highlighted in the report, there are concerns to staff, the flexibility that we believe we currently have with the planning framework for station areas, we want to maintain that flexibility. We are continuing to have conversations with the region to see what fallback may be on that very particular issue. In terms of the greenfield densities, again, we've had some conversations with the region on that issue, but they're preliminary. It will be a challenge for not just this municipality, but for others in the region and elsewhere. And we certainly want to press upon the problems and concern of peeling back some of the plans we've done to address the 2006 growth plan and have to start over.
Thank you. Councillor Whaley, you have to comment.
I do, I'm particularly happy to see that staff have pushed back a little bit on the province, on this growth plan. From my perspective, the fact that City Waterloo is gripped into the Golden Horseshoe area is a big problem. As far as I, when I read this stuff, I think the land use plan has Toronto-centric density targets, from what I think is a Toronto-centric provincial government. And we are not Toronto, and we do not want to be Toronto. And this pushes in that direction, and I just don't believe we should be a part of the Golden Horseshoe Keshman area. I don't know how we undo that, but it's not a good fit for us. We're not Toronto, we don't want to be Toronto, and this plan pushes in that direction.
Thank you, councillor Whaley. Councillor Henry?
So while agreeing with councillor Whaley that we need to support staff's report and recommendations in here, I will disagree with him on how he views the broader connections that we face with the GTA. We've certainly been working very heavily on the Toronto-Waarloo region corridor. I think our ability to connect on that is critical, and in fact, the advocacy's been moving in the other direction. It's been saying that the province's Ministry of Transportation, Ministry of Infrastructure that hold the transportation plan, which is GTA-centric and doesn't include us, is the problem. That in fact, that means to expand, not that we should contract, and that in that way we might be able to significantly improve provincial planning around connecting our region into the GTA in terms of transportation. So he and I may differ on this point, but that's fine. I think broadly, staff's comments hit it on the nose, and I'd like to highlight in particular that we broadly, that I broadly support the initiatives in the particular that we broadly, that I broadly support, the initiatives and the intent of the growth plan, it's the details and the implementation that need some work. I went to the province's land use consultation back in the summer down in Cambridge, and in talking with many folks in the growth secretary, who have come to know in various ways, it was evident that they had not significantly turned their mind to the issue of implementation. And so when I made comments about specific implementation timelines and details, they noted, and I won't name names, but they noted that I had been thinking further than they had at that point. So, my guess is that these are things that they are looking to receive in comments to understand what the issues are, and I hope that they have ears wide open on how to manage some of those. And the other thing that I think, that I heard that was interesting, was in terms of where the eighty person jobs per hectare target came from and what that functionally looks like on the ground in terms of the takeout, these have not been extensively modeled at the provincial level. And I think that's likely part of the confusion for municipalities trying to implement this. We've just figured out the new way of doing things, and this is a whole new set of takeouts and a whole new set of rules, and so both the private sector and us need to understand this. And if the province isn't willing to show its courage and show its work, it's very difficult to figure out exactly where to provide some comments. So, the broad comments of what the issues are, hopefully will get their minds jogging before we get a final plan. And at the very least, I would hope that the final plan is a case where they've shown their work, so that we can understand exactly what they mean by these things, and we're not all duking out the meaning of what these things are at the board for years to come.
Okay, well, the fact is, they are asking for our comments, and we've put them out there, so let's call a vote. All in favor? Yes, you know, oh, all in favor, yes? Yes?
Reposed.
You're opposed, okay. One opposed, councillor Nevin, thank you. Alright, we are going to move forward to cemetery services, advancement of land lease crematory disposition, RFP. We have a report and a package prepared by Bryce Kreutz, he's here, and you're appointed to do a presentation for us. Or you just, your desk?
Just a brief talk.
Pardon me?
Just a brief talk.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Durrell, Mayor Jaworski, members of council. This evening, I'm presenting a report that looks at advancing a land lease crematoria proposal at Parkview Cemetery. To provide a little bit of background, there are new competitive influences in the bereavement sector as a result of changes in legislation under the Bereavement Authority of Ontario. The ability now for funeral homes to combine services with crematoria is accelerating business competition for the City of Waterloo's own crematorium. In response to these new competitive pressures, staff believe it is in the best interest of the city and the community to seek provincial, regional, local interest in a business alliance. This potential business alliance would transfer the management of the city crematorium to a business alliance proponent. The care and maintenance of city cemeteries would continue to reside with the City of Waterloo under this plan. This report proposes council approve the exploration of a land lease crematorium alliance through the release of a request for proposal. Value and benefit of advancing this? This allows the city to continue to support community cemetery needs in the same manner the community has come to expect. The city would continue to care and maintain the cemetery and sell lots in the same manner as before. It allows the city to respond to current industry pressures while ensuring continuity of city-owned cemeteries. Next steps for us? Issue an RFP in October of this year, evaluate responses in early two thousand and seventeen, and return with recommendations for council's consideration. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, maybe you have some questions? Go ahead, councillor Whaley.
Well, thanks for your presentation. Just because we put in an RFP doesn't mean we have to take any action on the RFP. We gather information, essentially, we're gathering information at this stage, not picking a partner, correct?
Through you, Chair Durrell, councillor Whaley. That's exactly correct. There will be kind of risk management clauses within the RFP that allow the city to step sideways and completely alter any arrangements if the interests of the city were not fully endorsed through the RFP.
Excellent, any other questions? Thank you very much. Would anyone like to move the motion? Mayor Jaworski, seconded by councillor Whaley. Would you like to speak to the motion? Go ahead.
I think this is a great opportunity identified by staff. We have a capital investment in two thousand and eighteen of eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand coming up, total in ten years of one point four million that could potentially be deferred thanks to an alliance like this. So, I think it's an incredibly great idea to be looking towards partnerships and see what we can do with respect, or thanks to the RFP process.
Any other comments? Call on the vote then, all those in favor? See you now, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, onto the big show tonight. Lake Louise Boulevard Traffic Calming. We are going to begin with a presentation from Chris Hodgson. Mr. Hodgson? Take it away.
Thank you, Chair Durrell, Members of Council, ladies and gentlemen. Just a brief presentation to kind of go back on some of the work that was done and give an overview ahead of some of the work that some of the delegations has come tonight. So, that's the study area.
Is it possible to turn up his microphone, Adam Clark?
If you lift the, use the podium. There you go.
Alright, thank you.
Is that better? So, this is the study area back in the earlier study of around two thousand and five, two thousand and six. So, just a bit of background and to bring it up to speed, Lake Louise has had a historic speeding problem which was highlighted by us since back in two thousand and one. A traffic study was undertaken, which followed the Class Environmental Assessment Act, which was a requirement of the Environmental Assessment Act at that time, and that study included two public information sessions and a survey. A traffic calming plan consisting of traffic circles, bike lanes, and non-street parking was approved by council in two thousand and six. In two thousand and thirteen, funding was brought forward and a design was developed based upon approved plan. Due to concerns of some residents of the community, staff installed temporary traffic circles and compared speeds before, during, and after. Based on the data, the traffic circles had positive influence on traffic speeds in the vicinity of the circles, but there were two locations where traffic speeds increased, and staff concluded that this was due to the excessive distance between the traffic circles. Speeds increased again after the traffic circles were removed. So, following discussions with Waterloo Fire Rescue and City Transportation Operations Staff, the plan was amended to include two speed humps to break up those long distances between traffic calming measures. In April, staff brought forward a staff report, IPPW two thousand and sixteen thirty-four, recommending a traffic calming plan consisting of three permanent traffic circles and two speed humps. Council Director staff reviewed and compared traffic data on Auburn Drive in the University Downs neighborhood. The street functions similarly to Lake Louise, and a similar traffic calming plan was originally proposed for the street consisting of traffic circles and raised crosswalks. In two thousand and thirteen, council director staff to implement only the raised crosswalks, and these were installed last year. The data is included in this staff report here, that we can discuss as needed, but essentially... Find my notes. There are three notable points. The raised crosswalks have had a positive impact on traffic speeds immediately at the location of the crosswalks, but no impact when distances between traffic calming measures are significant. In fact, speed increased in three out of the six locations as the crosswalks were installed. This is very consistent with what we found at Lake Louise. This highlights the fact that physical traffic calming measures need to be spaced closer together to be more effective. Second notable point, forty kilometer hour speed zone for the school on Passon Trail is not being observed, and speeds are in excess of ten kilometers per hour with posted speed, in fact, it decreased after traffic calm went in. So, a safety issue still remains on Passon Trail. And third, the removal of the traffic circles from the original plan has ultimately impacted the effectiveness of that plan, and therefore, a safety issue remains on Auburn Drive. So, this is the plan staff brought before council in April, and this is the plan we will be recommending tonight. Just to pick up a few points that were raised at the April Public Information Session, sorry, within the March Public Information Session, but also at council in April, pedestrian crosswalks, sidewalks probably impacts emergency response and city transportation operations. So, here's a, let's say concept, it's like a preliminary design of what type of traffic circle would look like on one of the intersections at Lake Louise. So, in terms of the pedestrian crosswalks, you can see that they are set further back on the side streets. Use the L here. So, here's the crosswalks for the current stop signs on Two Side Street. Of course, there's nothing on Lake Louise at this time, and you can see that the crosswalks would be set out a couple of meters into the side streets. Sidewalks are on three locations anyway, one, three legs. The fourth would be in the northwest corner, but you can see the dashed dotted lines here. This represents the city property or the property boundary, and all works would take place within the city right of way. Emergency response and movement of snowplows and GRTs, etc., was a concern as well. So, we would anticipate, we would design this center circle to be semi-mantable, that provides access for the larger of the fire trucks, which was shown to actually have a problem, the rest can actually move around as normal, but for the large vehicle, the ladder truck would have to come right across, and we've been working with fire rescue on that. Similarly, the signs that are required in the center, and we've been working with some municipalities that are using actually what's called knockdown signs. So, the sign when it gets struck by a large vehicle, it would go down, the vehicle over, and it'd actually come back up. And just one thing, when we were installing last year, we didn't notice a lot of these intersections, I mean, this development's been since the nineties, there's a lot of cracking in the roadway. This is one example. So, what we were thinking was because this would require curves, which we require a cut in the asphalt, all these lines would have to be removed to put back, to put the crosswalks in the new locations, should this be approved. It was our intention that we would start to look at possibly milling out the entire surface of the intersection and then rebuilding that with the circle and the islands, and that would just help the, particularly the crosswalks and the roundboats stand out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hodgson. Are there any questions of staff? Go ahead, councillor Henry.
Thank you, Chair, and then just on that last point, when we talk about budget impacts and the range that was provided, that's still within the range that you're noting in the report, to be able to do what you just suggested would be the way that you'd mill and pave and all that stuff inside the intersection.
Through you, Chair Durrell, actually, no, that was an afterthought since we developed the cost back in April. That's something we've thought about through the summer. Of course, it's optional, it's not required, and it's just something we thought it would benefit the three intersections in question.
Any other questions of staff? Well, you'll stick around, if we have any other questions, we can ask you. Thank you very much. We have five delegations. Maybe we have more than that? Nope, we have five delegations at this point. And when you come to the microphone, we're going to start with Robert Lake, and if you could provide your name and address for the record? Just your name is fine.
Hi, good evening, councillors and mayor. Thank you for allowing me, give me the opportunity to present to you tonight. So, my name is Robert Lake, fourth of all, Lake Louise Boulevard. And I just want to start off by talking a little bit about who I am. I'm a resident of Lake Louise Boulevard since June two thousand and fifteen. My wife and I bought the property there, moved in right around that time, and we were very concerned about the proposals for the traffic calming. And what have I been doing? So, at the April meeting, I made a presentation to council on speed humps, and a lot of what was in that still applies, and I'm still very concerned about the speed humps. In addition to that, I undertook upon myself a daily monitoring of the street and traffic at all different times of the day. I had discussions with residents up and down the street regarding their concerns, and phoned the police at one point to report illegal turns at stop sign on Lake Louise, but it had nothing to do with speeding. But the interesting thing with the police was they did send cars out for a couple of days at the two intersections where there was illegal turns going on, so I thought that was a good response. And the other thing they said was, please get a license number. If you give us the license number of somebody you see breaking the law, we will take action. And I never was able to identify someone speeding, so I never took advantage of that. So, anyway, I kept constant watching on the street for speeding vehicles over the last six months, and I think the info will be interesting. So, just a common sense evaluation, I don't know what went on before two thousand and one, that's a long time ago, but I know exactly what's going on this year. There's very light traffic on Lake Louise at any time of the day, tends to be a bit heavier during wash hours. The vast overwhelming vast majority of the traffic is local residents and service vehicles. So, you can imagine, local residents are not going speed, are not going to do anything dangerous or irresponsible. I could identify very little pass-through traffic, however, there is a problem with the westbound Constellation Drive intersection. It tends to get backed up, and cars can be stopped there for five or ten minutes. So, it's probably more convenient for some cars that use the street a lot to take the cut through across Lake Louise, but it's not a big number of vehicles. I could not identify any speeders on the street after many observations. Note that the fifty kilometer speed limit allows a lot of latitude, so when you start doing this type of thing, you realize that the kilometers per hour on a side street like this is pretty generous, especially when you're thinking that you're not really going to ticket them until you get to seventy or eighty kilometers per hour. I personally drove on Lake Louise several times a day at speeds between forty and fifty, this is under the speed limit, just to see what would happen. Occasionally, cars would come up behind me, but they would stay on the speed limit and then turn off onto the street. Only once did a following car catch up and actually pass me, which I thought was a little bit dangerous, but I did not take their license number because I didn't think that they, you know, going past them, I'd actually get a speeding ticket out of it. So, my question is, have any accidents been reported, any speeding tickets handed out, any injuries, or even close calls to pedestrians or children? I haven't heard of anybody, anything, nobody's told me of it, I haven't even seen anything like that. So, the general observation over six months is the traffic on Lake Louise is much like traffic on any other side street in Waterloo, perhaps better. I know there's some streets where it's worse, like other shit. I know there's some streets where it's worse, like other shit. And then there's some streets that may be a bit better. But there's a few occasional non-stop stop signs, minor reaching of the speed limit. Maybe they go over, go sixty if somebody's in a hurry, not thinking. But rarely any dangerous or obviously irresponsible activities. And I think that's really what we're trying to get at here. So my input to council is, this proposed solution is not needed. What problem is the traffic calming proposal intended to solve? If a success by a vehicle speeding, then the proposed solution is poorly targeted. It's not even targeting speeding directly. To reduce speed, the speed limit must be reduced. This is common sense. The proposed solution is like using a sledgehammer to kill a fly. There's lots of collateral damage. And you can, you know, like all this stuff about getting the roundabouts to work properly and you gotta do this, you gotta do that. There's problems with roundabouts. There's problems with the speed humps. It's disrespectful of seniors to say, well, people with bad backs have to go over these speed limits sometimes a day. And I think it's just the wrong approach. It seems like, oh, you guys are getting problems throwing a few speed humps. It's just not right. And since the speed limit is not reduced to fifty kilometers per hour, I think this was what the study showed, is people will slow down at the barriers. So what's happening is putting up physical barriers. They'll slow down on those physical barriers, but once they're past them, they're going to speed up again. They have fifty kilometers per hour to work with. Right? It's human nature. Slow down, go over the bump. You know, if you're in a hurry for some reason. And that's not the kind of behavior I think we want to encourage. The proposed solution is costly. So I think I heard it was getting very close to a hundred thousand dollars. Three roundabouts, two speed humps. Wow! Plus consulting costs, there's a consultant involved, we heard about that. Staff costs, we've got a senior engineer, we've got other staff people, we've done an awful lot of work. This is a poor use of scarce taxpayer-funded financial resources. So why do we spend so much money? It's a highly questionable project. I mean, why not instead build one roundabout, a westbound Conservation Drive intersection, where there's much higher traffic volume? There is a backup at times, it's four stop signs basically. So one roundabout there would work. And I'm racking my brains about this. What's going on? Are we using Lake Louise as the guinea pig in a traffic experiment? It's just not appreciated, I'm sorry. So conclusion is, proposed solution is unnecessary. It's poorly conceived from the beginning, does not target the problem, has been badly executed, delayed several times. 2001, I mean, things have changed a lot since now. It's already traffic calm. Traffic is calm. I watch cars go by, they're going at low speeds. You can walk across the street and say, well, I watch it for speeding cars. It's a joke, it's becoming a joke. So what I'm recommending is that this project needs to be terminated by your vote tonight. It's gone on long enough, it needs to end. Possible follow-up actions. If speeding continues to be a concern, there's some complaints that show up, please consider reducing the speed limit from fifty kilometers to forty kilometers. And I've listed some benefits of that. Would make the whole street, for its whole length, a special traffic zone. I mean, if we need to be calm, why not make it a special traffic zone? It'd be equivalent to a school zone. But we need to get people in the habit of safe driving. These barriers just don't do it. This solution of lower speed limits, more skeptical residents and frequent street use, since there are no speed humps or negative impacts from the other things. And one thing my brother told me is that these speed limit changes actually get incorporated in all the GPS online systems. So they get reflected in what people who are using GPS is they're doing. So they probably wouldn't be put on to Lake Louise to pass through because, you know, a lower speed limit. And you may scoff at it and say, well, that doesn't work. But I would say from common sense, you're going to get a reduction of at least five to 10 kilometers per hour. There are people are going to be, the sponsor people are going to be running slower. The other people are going to learn to do it too. And the other thing we need to do is push for a roundabout at westbound Conservation Drive, since that would take pass-through traffic off of our street. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Does anyone have a question on the delegation? Thank you for coming to speak to us tonight. Let's keep our comments to ourselves. There are people on both sides of this Lake Louise Boulevard traffic calming who want everyone to feel comfortable to be able to speak here tonight. The next person who will be speaking is Jay Boyer. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members and city staff for the opportunity to discuss the Lake Louise traffic calming. There was a petition that was done in the summer of 2015 by Matthew Palmer. And the reason for my delay in presenting this to council today was because the last time I was here, in April, this was handed to me just a few minutes before the last council meeting. And I had arrived at that meeting to present the former petition that was completed online. This was done throughout the summer of 2015. Matthew went door to door. And sorry, the reason why I didn't present this at that time was that I didn't want a conflicting messaging. And I felt as a result of the meeting that took place the last time, the discussion, the discussion about speed humps and so on and so forth, that was important for me to present that to council today. So the statement of the petition says, "We, the people of Lake Louise Boulevard, do not agree with the traffic calming circles in the parking lanes on both sides of the road or the bike lanes. We, the people, think that speed humps, speed bumps, I think is what it says, but I think it meant the speed humps, will be better solution than traffic calming circles." So to sum it up, there's 286 signatures on this petition by the residents in Conservation Meadows, 55 of which reside on Lake Louise. Their names, addresses, and phone numbers are on this. If I could submit this to the clerk if that would be appropriate. In many of my discussions with the residents, they still feel today that this is the better option than what is being presented by city council. And I think that from the last council meeting, this led us to the review of Auburn Drive. And I thank council for postponing the vote at that point in time of their decision until the study was completed. And it would appear that Councilor Henry knew more about the dynamics of the streetscape on Auburn Drive than the rest of us. As I recall, at the last council meeting here, they indicated that Auburn Drive was not similar to what we were hoping to obtain for Lake Louise. And once we received the notification that Auburn Drive was not successful, I went over to see the area and what may have caused this. My findings were as follows. The humps were not within industry standards. The rise did not slow the motion of the vehicles, I should say the rise and run. Most would simply drive right over it, no effect at all. As you've seen by the diagram, the humps are three to 400 yards apart. Industry standard is 120 to 150 yards apart. This led me to look elsewhere. This is a document that I provided available for the Greenbrook, that was sent to Lizzy. Two PDFs. Pardon me. Is that available to put on the screen?
Now, clerk, would you like to?
The emails were presented to council. We can certainly go obtain the PDFs, put them on if you'd like.
Okay, is that possible?
Sure.
I thought that's what I had requested, I apologize if my message was unclear.
Does the rest of your presentation involve using those?
Yeah, yes, it does. I mean, I went to attend Greenbrook, and there was some very valuable information that was attended.
Would you like to pause then, until we can get those PowerPoints ready? It's going to take our staff a little bit of time to grab them. They weren't expecting to put it up. All of us councilors have got them into our email boxes today to look at them.
Right.
But if you'd like to use it on your presentation.
Right. Okay, well, I think I could probably speak to it, not to really pull things up. If you had a chance to review it, if all the councilors had a chance to review it, I would ask that question first. Okay, so I think what you found in that report is that on Greenbrook Drive, as the surveys that were taken from the city of Kitchener, that I believe, I may have the number incorrect, but I think all the locations that were studied, with the exception of two, achieved significant reduction in speeds by using speeds, proper speed humps, using the proper rise and run. And the same was to be said in two locations on a Banyan Trainer. And as, so of course, once I received that information, I went down to Greenbrook myself to see why was Greenbrook so successful and why was Auburn Street not successful. And my findings were that the speed humps were put in position properly within industry standards, within 120 yards of each other, and did have a proper rise and run. So that leads me to believe that speed humps can work for the reduction of speed on a street such as Lake Louise. And I feel that that is the better solution when they're completed that way. Oh, the other thing that I would add to that was that my findings were also that there was thirty kilometer an hour signs at the speed humps. Not sure if any council members that drive down Greenbrook at all, or Banyan Trainer, but they're all listed that way. What I also found is that my investigation with the, or investigation, discussion with the city of Kitchener, that they have 20 other streets that have similar landscape to Greenbrook, that they have had successful results, and they continue to use speed humps throughout the city as a measurement of traffic calming. So sorry, somebody had asked me to ask a question, I'm not sure if I should, of city staff. The proposal plan to indicate that the survey of any blind spots were, have been completed. I'm not sure if whether I should ask that question now or.
Thank you. We can break that question down and ask staff.
So the question that was asked is, with the proposed plan that was just put up on the screen, is if there has been a survey of any of the blind spots completed at any of the traffic calming circles? I think that was one of the issues that was brought forward the last time.
I've read that down. We'll wait till he's finished his presentation and then.
Okay. So one of the interesting things that I came across in the last couple of days was the neighborhood strategy that just got approved on, in June, which I congratulate city council for approving that document and the relationship between the city and staff and council and neighborhoods. I did read the full document, I do understand what it's about, about parks and recreation and neighborhoods. And, you know, there's a little exposure at the end, but that talks about, you know, things that are legislative and so on and so forth. And I think one of the things that was put in there was about traffic calming. But more importantly, what this spoke to me was the importance of the relationship between the city and its residents and its neighborhoods as a whole. I don't think that you can pick and choose what becomes part of the strategy and what doesn't. To be quite honest, it's a relationship building between everybody with trust and transparency. And I think that throughout this entire process in the last year, that the neighborhood has spoke very loudly to city council, to city staff. And I'd like to stand on this report today to, as a neighborhood strategy in the faith of council in order to support our initiatives today. So what I would ask of council this evening, I would ask them for option one, which would be the vote of installation of speed humps performing to industry standards, proper rise and run, and distance with the appropriate signage and successful implementation in the city of Kitchener at approximately 20 locations. An overwhelmingly desired by residents in Conservation Meadows. If that vote passes, I would like to have this cert option one B, which is a vote to remove the bike lanes and return on-street parking and resulting additional measures of traffic calming. And if one A is not passed, then move on to option two, which would be to vote on a plan submitted by city council or by two council, by city staff, if there are some residents that would rather have the proposed plan than not at all, all of the concerns for pedestrian and cyclists. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions in the delegation from council? Counselor Burke?
The easiest question I have, which is, what does your perfect measure of this road look like?
I had drawn it out. There's approximately seven to eight speed humps that I would see along Lake Louise. That would, you know, be placed strategically along Lake Louise. I did include that plan with me tonight because I do believe that it requires other input. And once again, I'll stand on a strategic plan and say that it has to be something that, you know, city staff is involved in and make their recommendations on. I'm not necessarily the one who's going to say exactly where to blow up long, but I believe that it needs to be within the industry standards. And I also, I believe that the bike lanes are not required, quite frankly. I'm not sure why they're there. I can see it on busier streets that have a much higher volume of traffic and bring the residents of Lake Louise, bring their parking back. They miss it dearly. Number of the houses and where it's been removed from, single car, just single car lane drivers. And I know that the residents on Lake Louise are upset by that. So that's what I would see. I would see the informed industry standards with speed humps.
Any other questions in the delegation? Thank you very much for coming.
Okay, was there, I think.
Yep, Will.
Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, we can take care of that for you. Did you write down those questions that he asked? Do you want me to give it to you? So he said it did staff to a survey of blind spots that had completed at the roundabouts.
Through you, Chair, Darrell, to the delegate. We would undertake that if council approved such a plan.
Thank you very much. Counselor Bead, did you have your hand up? Yeah, go ahead.
Through you, Chair Darrell, can I ask staff a question?
Absolutely.
Probably go for it. So Chris, how, if we were to, if, as the delegation suggested, speed bumps, how many would be required on Lake Louise?
Through you, Chair Darrell, there are ranges of standards, exactly as the delegate mentions. And I did include that in the April staff report, which I believe is somewhere between eight and 10 for Lake Louise.
The next delegation is Randy Taylor. Mr. Taylor, you have 10 minutes.
First question, this is water for speakers?
Pardon me, is it water?
Here's the water. That's the good stuff.
Okay, Chair Darrell, I'm the mayor, council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Randy Taylor, and I live on Lake Louise 444. I've been there since 2003. Can you hear me first of all?
Yes.
Everybody can hear me, great. Okay, it's recommended that council reject Waterloo staff's Okay, it's recommended that council reject Waterloo's staff's plan as presented for Lake Louise traffic calming. And I appreciate that staff have worked hard at developing their plan and my intent tonight is not to be critical of their work. Staff, however, though, does not live in Lake Louise and do not have the same level of understanding of the needs and concerns of the residents of this area. I mean, just out walking around the people, you talk to all sorts of people. My previous presenter talked about Matthew Palmer having gone out and generated a couple hundred door-to-door signatures. Matthew, do you want to stand up? Matthew's 20 years of age. We've got people up there 75 years of age who have the same concern. So, I mean, this isn't, you know, 20 of us who are all, you know, fussed about this. This is a wide, broad section of, of Lake Louise and you can talk to, you know, anybody you want as you walk around. Now, the majority of the residents of Lake Louise would agree that there's a speeding issue and want a solution to address it. I mean, this goes back to 2001. I mean, clearly, you know, we want something done. The vast majority of residents, however, are not supportive of staff's proposed plan. And the major impediment to the residents' perception of the staff's plan is the proposal to install the three traffic circles. That, more than anything, is, is causing a lot of pushback. There's other issues around the bike lanes and so on and so forth, and there's confusion as to why we have them. But right now, I think the major impediment is, are these three traffic circles. And presentations made during the April 11th council meeting clearly outlined a lot of those concerns. So, I'm not going to go through them other than say that a lot of them concerned safety, cost, and effectiveness of those traffic circles. Now, I suspect that the last thing the council wants to do is to mandate this proposal on the residents of Lake Louise. On paper and online petitions, each one 280 or so in paper, but 350 online, all those petitions showed overwhelmingly that the percentage of people opposed to the plan was major. Now, to be clear, I'm not saying 100% of the people in the area rejected staff's plan. I mean, you always, there's always some people who are for it and that's fine. But by the same token, I don't think that any member of this council received or would have received if they weren't a claim, 100% of the voters support last election. I mean, nobody gets 100%, no idea gets 100%. But I think what I can tell council is that the overwhelming majority of residents on Lake Louise oppose staff's plan and simply said residents of Lake Louise have fairly spoken, no traffic circles on Lake Louise. There's only downside to council and to the residents of Lake Louise should staff's proposal be mandated. And I won't go there, but it's just, it's not good for anybody if we get into those kinds of situations. I, however, and many other people I've talked to, believe that there's an opportunity for staff's plan to be modified. And I suggest that council recommend a softer implementation. For example, and I agree with the previous presenter Jay, just speed humps as per the request of the residents. I mean, 280 people, I think that's a pretty good number. Additionally, we recommend the addition of signage with a reduced speed at each hump. And so, the Greenbrook example, Greenbrook Drive example in Kitchener, I think, is a, is a good example. My wife and I are down there driving today and it's got, I guess, eight or 10, I don't know, speed bumps and it's certainly slowed down traffic. All that aside, when I was down there, I saw a car that had gone around a corner too fast and was stuck in a tree with a police officer beside it. So, no matter what solution you come up with, it's never going to be 100%. Foolproof, because there are fools out there, but we do want to at least try and reduce as many of them as we can. So, you know, that would be the model that I think that we should look at. The success of these speed bumps could be assessed at a later date, at which time further actions could be implemented. I mean, I think all this stuff is really based on let's put it in, let's monitor it, see if it's working. I mean, I also went out to Auburn. I, I never slowed down. I don't want to tell you what speed I was going at, but I was probably going over the speed limit and I went over those two humps and didn't hurt my car at all. So, I mean, I, I think you need things out there that are effective. So, the advantage to council recommending this modified proposal are, first of all, this could be implemented in a timely, timely fashion. I mean, I'm getting, I'm seeing from some of the earlier notes, we're talking 2017. I mean, it'd be great if we could get a couple of speed humps or as many as we can get in there this year. I mean, we've been waiting a long time and, and clearly there's people on the street, particularly people with younger kids, who are concerned about the speeds. Second of all, we can ensure buy-in and support for residents of the area. I mean, I, I worked in corporate business for 40 years and I've found a lot of solutions were based on people engaging, giving, negotiating, trying, modifying. And, and my concern in this process is that it's been very, you know, both sides have really been dug down on their own positions. There's been very little flexibility and we keep seeing the same solution over and over and over. And it's just not going to work. And thirdly, it should cost less than the proposed plan. And I say should because I'm not doing the numbers, but eight, eight or 10 speed, uh, speed humps at $5,000, $6,000 a pop should be less than three roundabouts and who knows how many other speed humps. So, basically, conclusion, and I'm sorry for dragging on here, but I, I basically like to ask council, to ask staff to revise the plan to reflect the input that's been shared with the citizens. And I like it done in a timely manner so that we can put Lake Louise to bed so that you folks don't have to hear about it anymore. We can go back to our little street and just carry on life. So, I thank you for your time, I thank you for your attention, and I hope that you do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I was wondering if any questions of the delegation? I'll remind everyone once again, please keep your applause and your comments to yourself. The next delegation up is Mr. David Hight, H-E-I-T. How do I say that?
Hight.
Hight?
Hight.
Hight, thank you. Mr. Hight, the mic is yours for 10 minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, councillor Jowarski, long time no see. I'm David Hight. I live at 558 Sandbanks Crescent. I live on a street directly off Lake Louise. I've lived there since 1999. So, I've attended a lot of proceedings over the last year, mainly as an observer, trying to come up with a logical conclusion to what I see going on. And I agree with a lot of sentiments that have already been spoken. I wanted to give a little, my own personal perspective on this because I want to take a hard, logical look at what's going on here. The first thing to understand is that, as a lot of people have already said, since 1999, I would say the traffic on Lake Louise has increased marginally. It's not been a major thoroughfare for people cutting through. Even when the subdivision that was put behind the subdivision, which might enter off Pine Ridge, is there, it just did not increase the traffic that much. Most of the times when I stop at Sandbanks to turn left on Lake Louise, which is my normal, there is no cars, no bicycles, no, nothing to have to contend with. I am, by the way, a pedestrian, on the cyclist and, and, and motorists, which I probably go up and down the street four or five times a day. The, when I looked at all this, one of the things I kind of noticed is that, the interesting thing is that there's a lot of things from the proposal that try and control traffic at the front end of the street. And where the speeds are actually highest are on the hill. In fact, when I come off Conservation Drive and come down Lake Louise, I have to ride my brakes to keep it at 50 or lower. If I just let it go, it's going, it's going to longer up to 60 kilometers an hour. So, I do that. Like a lot of other people, I tried Auburn Drive and actually when I was looking for the last line, I drove over the speed humps, not knowing that those were the speed humps. I'm not particularly bad with spotless, so that's, obviously didn't work. The other thing I've got to mention is that when we tried the experiment with the temporary traffic circles, I was kind of surprised that they actually put one in Lake Louise and Sandbanks slash Rockaway, on one side of the street is Sandbanks, other side is Rockaway. We have mediums on either side on Lake Louise. I mean, that's not kind of shown in these line drawings, but there are, there's boulevards and mediums with a lot of trees and shrubs. And my sightline when I approached that intersection is basically blocked till I hit the intersection, so I stopped. And guess what happened when we had the traffic circles? If the odd car was coming, they saw me stop, so they assumed they had right of way, they went through. So, I generally just let people go where we go, but effectively I still have a stop sign. This was an effective way of doing it. And to me, in the final conclusion, yeah, but we actually wanted to improve something. I then looked at the position of all these traffic circles. One is right at the entrance to the subdivision at, right basically at Westmount and I think it's Elsmere and Crescent. There's only one house between the stop sign at Westmount and the roundabout at Elsmere. Doesn't make any sense to have it there. It should have been at Sandbanks on Lake Louise, which is another block up, but it's a three-way stop, not a four-way. And there's a bit of a problem with that, I would guess, in terms of putting a traffic circle there. The other logical place would be at Watertown on Lake Louise, but again, it's a three-way stop, not a four-way. Watertown is actually a street that is an exit entrance into the subdivision from Conservation. It's not there. So, these traffic circle placements are actually compromises. They're not in good positions at all to achieve control of the surrounding traffic. Again, where speeds are highest in the neighborhood, there is the less, there is no traffic circles, there's no traffic circles in the back end. When I looked at the question and answers that were published regarding, why wasn't there a traffic circle up the council? The, the sack response was, there's a medium there, you don't need it. Well, I've got mediums on either side on Lake Louise, so why do I need one right where I am at Sandbanks? To me, it doesn't make any sense. So, the other thing I kind of look at, well, I understand speed is a, you know, could be an issue. And roundabouts, I understand, can reduce the threat of injury in a major intersection and they're generally safer, but they do have more accidents. And I kind of look at, there's an equation here between speed and safety, okay? And are we gaining anything in speed, but is it coming at the cost of safety? My issue has been driving down Lake Louise when I go across bicyclist, bicyclist. I'm now forced into the path, the path of that bicyclist. I can slow down for them, obviously, if there hasn't been any collisions, but I'm worried about the time that somebody is distracted on something and missed that and the driver drives right into the cyclist because they were forced into the same path. This is not good roundabout design. This is a force fit into existing intersections. So, that to me is a bit of a problem that you're creating a new problem and trying to solve a speed problem, you're creating a safety issue. Safety is more important than reducing speed from maybe 55 kilometers an hour to 50 kilometers an hour. So, that's a bit of an issue. I won't get into the, the parking zones, but I do find after we put in one-side street parking, you have the lanes, now that I had a clear shot down the street, if I wanted to, I could speed much easier. On a side street, you'd only have to weave through the traffic and now I don't have to. Lake Louise Boulevard is not a big boulevard street. It's just a normal dual-lane street. And, and they had to restrict parking on the side just to have the bike lanes put in, just to look and fit. The other thing I will comment is ever since those have been put in, those bike lanes, every time I've driven down the street, there is something parked or stopped in the bike lane. Whether it's a city bus, a school bus, a mailbox delivery vehicle, a service vehicle, or even a car park there, there's always something there. So, I'm, I'm constantly swerving into bike lanes to get around and get down the street. So, to me, realize that this is a residential street, not a boulevard, that people just drive through, so a bit of an issue there. I already mentioned, I, I think the placement of these traffic circles was a real compromise and I don't think they actually served the purpose they intended to do. You know, these streets, I have very strict sightlines. Getting to the street, I have to stop, right? And my stop, as I've already mentioned, people just assume I'm getting right of way. One thing that came up at the last council meeting was, was the discussion on stop signs. And, and one point I will make is that I know the purpose of the stop sign is to regulate who has the right of way through the intersection, not to control the speed. But a byproduct of that is actually controlling speed. Most of us, when we leave or come home in the evening, have to go past Conservation Drive and Westmount. That's a four-way stop sign. Our speed is controlled by virtue of that. So, to say that it doesn't control speed is actually, it takes away from the credibility of the argument because in fact it does and we experience it every day. And, you know, I don't go speeding down Westmount, I, I stop and I, I go again. So, there's that. The other thing I'll say is that, the last thing I'm just going to mention from a personal perspective, I don't know what wrong here, but somehow we have to take a look at the process of looking at traffic calming. This has taken way too long, way too many debates, and it is just not going through. And I think for some reason, either the voice of the community, I don't know if it's wrong or right or whatever, but somehow we're just not figuring out how to work together at this time. Because I think this is not just an engineering problem, this is a social problem that we have to figure out. There's not a lot of spurs, it's just a few. So, but I would suggest that we have to take a look at the process that we come to in terms of resolving these kind of neighborhood issues. These are not huge issues and they shouldn't be. So, I'll leave it at that. Those are just the points I wanted to make. There aren't any questions.
Thank you. Any questions in the delegation? Appreciate you coming out. And the last delegation at 10 minutes is Tim McElroy. You have 10 minutes.
I only need 10 minutes.
Okay. Hey, continue.
Being the fifth speaker, I'm the evening chair, here, and councillors. My name is Tim McElroy and I live on the corner, excuse me, where one of the temporary roundabouts was installed last year. I last spoke to you at the April meeting. And I informed you of all the dangers that I saw on a daily basis as two pedestrian cyclists and vehicles, as they maneuvered their way through the roundabout. I'm not going to stand here and restate what I said and that I saw, but this intersection became a very dangerous corner. At the last council meeting, it was mentioned that there didn't seem to be a general consensus on what the neighborhood wanted. Some wanted stop signs. Some wanted on-street parking, bike lanes removed. Some wanted more speed humps. Some wanted no speed humps. However, there is one common element through all of this. I've been engaged in this process from the beginning. And with all the meetings, and with all the meetings that I've attended, the most contentious issue has always been the installation of permanent roundabouts, always. Aside from Matthew's petition, there is the online petition against his recommendation that has 300 signatures against installing this plan. And when you go on that website and you look at the comments, the posts of comments, one after another, after another, mention the safety issues. At the meeting held at Albert McCormick Arena, one, one of staff spoke about how vertical measures were better and horizontal, horizontal measures with regard to reducing speed. Everyone in this room is concerned about the speed of some vehicles along Lake Louise. That's not isolated, it's certain groups, that's everybody. We all want to put safety as a number one priority. So, with that being said, with all the comments about how unsafe the temporary roundabouts were during the trial period for people walking and riding and driving, I simply say why does staff continue to put forward a solution that residency has been safe? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions in the delegation? See, Matt, thank you for coming out again. And that is the end of the 10-minute delegations. However, anyone else would like to speak, you may have five minutes. I saw a hand up. Ari, thank you. Back to council here. Does it look around? So, we have a recommendation in, in front of us. Would anyone like to discuss that? Should we move the motion, councillor Bailey? And who would like to second that motion?
Seconding the speaker.
Mayor Jowarski seconds that motion and now we'll have the discussion. Would you like to go first then? Go ahead, Mayor Jowarski.
You know, I think, you know, as we looked at this through the years and obviously, you know, just the past two years for me, that traffic calming is something that, you know, is probably the most contentious thing from, from many different aspects. When I look at it, I think that traffic engineering continuously evolves. I never really would have thought of it as a continuously evolving thing. But, you know, as an example, speed limits. If we look back a few years ago, it was all about the speed limits and stop signs. And the one thing I've, I've learned... And the one thing I've learned, being on two councils, is the fact that you really need visuals in order to slow people down. And speed limits, it makes it perceived safety more so for pedestrians, but the people who are problem speeders simply don't obey them anyways. And we saw that in the Auburn Drive, or the Pastoring Drive, traffic study here, where speed limit went down, speeds actually went up. Four-way stop signs, you know, in unintended places are potentially dangerous. And as one of the delegations mentioned tonight, they're not only intended to control traffic movements, but that is their purpose under the Highway Traffic Act, is to control traffic movements at busy intersections rather than for speed moderation. Speed humps are also used for many different times. And I think really what we have here is an implementation of modern techniques. We have Kitchener's Glasgow Street, which underwent major changes, including traffic islands, curb bumps, bumpouts, bicycle lanes, as well as bicycle lanes that go over to the curbs and do neat things like that. And I know that is something that was put in over, very quickly, over on the last call. And I think the visuals are the key. I did as well spend time on Auburn Drive, Pastoring Drive. I've spent many, many days on Lake Louise observing the traffic. And yet again, today, I think people were going about 50-ish and then one car went by around 85 or 90. And so, it's obvious that it does happen. This does happen. To some of the points here made by the residents, I actually don't think the temporary roundabouts did any of us any favors. They are an example of how a traffic circle might work as opposed to giving it definitive, you know, it's not the final implementation. And I think that in all of us trying to gauge how a traffic circle might work there, we put in these temporary rubber islands and with no other aspects of it being implemented, including where crosswalks are going to occur, things like that. It really doesn't give the people how it's actually going to work, much like we have at Beaver Creek Road and Laurelwood Drive, where it's very tight, buses get around it, service vehicles get around it and people. A good example would be the stop signs we had to leave in on the temporary traffic circles, where in fact people were intended to go through, but just didn't feel comfortable doing so, couldn't use it properly. So, anyway, that's just some of the background, some of the things I've looked at, the facts, the Auburn Drive, which was something that we did send staff away to look at, to take a look at what it looked like when council edited a traffic engineer's diagram in real time. Did it work or not, much like we're expecting it would work very well and had unintended consequences. And I think what we've heard tonight and seen in the data is that traffic speeds are an issue in there and we will eventually have the new subdivision moving forward on, and I think it'll be linked with Pineary Trail. So, it seems like that as buildings continue to go out on Pineary Trail and that's connected further, that we're going to see increased traffic on Lake Louise Boulevard. So, anyway, so that's some of my reasons for moving away.
Thank you, Mayor Jaworski. Yep, go ahead, Councilor Burke.
These are, and I've only been here for two years, these are really contentious and really difficult and really emotional because sometimes it's enough to see one car whipping down the street and it just mits anger. I completely understand that. The reality is that with all the technology and all the engineering that we have, this remains not a problem of the city's. It's the drivers' problem. It's the drivers who create the problem. And they're sometimes urinators and they live down there. And it's sometimes people who aren't from the neighborhood, but in the reality, it is all of us. We all do it. If we followed the rules, it wouldn't happen now sadly. We haven't created that perfect society yet where everybody follows the rules. So, we have to come up with situations like this. I suppose we could put 10 or 12 speed bumps down there. Although we could have saved money by just moving that quarter of our road up for that matter of time. Speed bumps come with their own problems. All of you who've read the research and have made the effort to come here tonight know that they also come with issues. There's a slowdown in emergency services. And I think I read something like six seconds for each speed bump slows down an ambulance or an emergency service vehicle. It's not much if you're on the first bump. It's a lot if you're on the 10th bump. 60 seconds is a lot to somebody who's had a heart attack. So, is this perfect? No, it's not. Nothing ever will be because as long as you're going to have people driving cars on roads, we're going to have those issues. But it is to some degree a meshing of technologies that we believe. And believe me when I say this, we want this to work. As the one delegate said, we don't want you to come back again, really. We love you, but we don't want you to come back again on this. We would like to have this solution. And that's where I'm going. I know this has been around since 2001, but leaving it the way it is certainly isn't the solution. And it's not the solution that you want. And you don't want to wait another 15 years. I know that.
Councilor Willey, if you'd tell me when it goes back, pardon?
The... No comment.
Uh, Councilor Burke.
Thank you, Councilor Durrell, Chair Durrell. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening and for your very respectful presentations. As a city councillor, I not only have to consider the residents of the Lake Louise area, but the residents of all Ward 3 and all the citizens of Waterloo. I have to consider not only the safety and well-being of the citizens who live in the area now, but about the citizens who will live there in the future. I support safe, inclusive neighborhoods for the entire city. We've heard from outside professional traffic engineers, road safety experts and our own hard-working staff why the recommendation presented tonight is the best option for traffic calming and safety. Traffic circles are used successfully in many cities on neighborhood streets. I'm not a traffic engineer, but it makes sense to me to implement proven methods to improve the safety of the neighborhood. I also represent the solid majority of citizens who support the recommendations presented tonight. So, for these reasons, I will be voting in favor of the staff report. Thank you.
Any other comments? It's called a vote. All those in favor? Is everyone? That has passed. Thank you to everyone who came out tonight to speak on their, to speak your minds. We'll read it out. Along here, for consideration of motion, are there any items? There are no items for consideration of motion. There are no items for consideration of motion, given that previous meetings. There are no motions, there are none. Communications and correspondence, there are none. Any regional information and correspondence? Since we have none, you want to give us a report right now?
We have not.
Okay. Any unfinished business? Mayor Jaworski.
Thank you. A few items to note. Today was the grand opening of Mother's Pizza in the former Bennys at Weaver and Block Street. That is reopened. Many of us have fond memories of it through the years, certainly from Uptown Waterloo where the, where, Chainsaw, Chainsaw is now. You know, and they gave, they had a preview opening on Friday night. And a few weeks ago, they said, not only would you, would the mayor, would we like to come to our opening, but would you also design a pizza as a fundraiser? And so, at first I thought, let's go with Waterloo colors. Yellow pineapple and black olives. And I thought, that won't sell very well. And, or it tastes very good. So, I thought, what would really taste good? And so, I decided to go with a yummy clubhouse sandwich. So, bacon, chicken, tomatoes, arugula, as well as, oh, they-
You put green stuff on a pizza?
What's that?
You put-
Oh. So, here's what they do, Councilor Burke. So, they take the pizza out of the oven and that's when they add the arugula, as well as their own special aioli sauce to substitute for the mayonnaise. There's a picture on Twitter of it and it's a fundraiser and forever pizza sold for the next few weeks. They'll contribute money to the local United Way. So, it's a great way to, you know, contribute to the other ways, to head up to Mother's Pizza and order the mayor's special.
So, it's mayor's pizza, not Mother's Pizza?
Absolutely. The mayor's Mother's Pizza, the Mother's Mayor's Pizza. So, it's a great, and it's a great way to honor our partnership. As you know, the staff are doing the United Way campaign here. And we also have a partnership through the Neighborhood Matching Funds, thanks to United Way of helping our neighborhood. So, I thought it was a great way for us to get back to United Way. This Thursday is the annual Oktoberfest luncheon, Thursday noon in the Uptown Square. And I'd just like to remind people that when we held the Tragically Hip concert, we had 2,000, 3,000 people there. Very easy to get to Uptown Waterloo, plenty of free parking on Regina Street. So, everybody should come up here. We're going to have great pillar sausages and we're also going to add a vegan option this year. Also, a special note, it won't just be a pretzel anymore. We're actually going to have our own cake tapping too. So, there you go. We got our own cake tapping this year. Third, last Friday, through Scott and Evanstein, through Tanya, we had a event for affordable housing, on how to create more affordable housing in the city of Waterloo. And it was under the aspect of repurposing student housing. And we had well over 100 attendees. They had to cut off registration as it approached 150 attendees. And it was really to get the community thinking about how, if I have a longstanding student residence, it might be on the periphery of Waterloo, you know, how I might be able to partner with the Y or House of Friendship or show, to enable, to do something with it. And we had a number of examples there. We had the YWCA there, which was an old forum to Earp Street, formerly a student rental housing. We also had the Host of Friendship there with their house on Allen Street, which was formerly a stu-
Ray Hope. Ray Hope.
Sorry, Ray Hope, thank you. Ray Hope there with their house on Allen Street, which has been your purpose for single refugees. And this was all thanks to our staff, the Town and Gown Committee, which writtenly identified this idea, as well as a partnership with CMHC. And this all came together. So, hopefully, as the months go on and conversations continue, we'll see more discussions on that. I think this term of council, we're actually going to see some of the most generational affordable housing that we've seen there in all time.
Mayor, will this report come out?
I don't think, is this God here yet?
Ken?
Here, Chair Durrell to Councilor Willey. We can make sure we can provide perhaps a briefing note, the outcomes and the process and what we gained from it.
Thank you. And that's it for me.
Anyone else have any new business up top? There's always lots going on uptown. And I guess specifically Thursday, and there's the Thanksgiving Day Parade, which is this weekend. Lots for us, all to be grateful for. Are there any questions of staff? Then I'm going to see if anyone wants to adjourn this meeting. Whoa, two on the side here. Let's go Henry Freeman. And all in favor?
So, we are. Welcome to the City of Waterloo Special Council Meeting on Monday, October 3, 2016. Casper, disclosure of preliminary interest in general nature thereof, seeing none. An act in the bylaws. Somebody care to move the bylaws, Councilor Burke, Councilor Durrell? All those in favor? Councilor Willey, all those in favor? That's it. Motion to adjourn, Councilor Durrell, Councilor Henry, all those in favor? That would be all of us. Thank you.